Good evening, folks. This time we'll call the Tuesday, April 3, 2012, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. This evening, I'm going to call on our attorney, Mr. Bill Pope, to deliver our invocation, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before I pray, I'd like to start with a moment of silent prayer so that everybody here might be able to say what's on their heart. Let's pray. Merciful God, we pause to acknowledge you, to praise you, and to thank you. For most of us in Iredell County, we're living in what's almost paradise; for some, it's not. For those less fortunate and who suffer illness or despair, we ask your consideration. We ask that our eyes and our ears and our hearts be opened, that we may see them and see ways to help them. We confess that we often fall short, we don't always follow the golden rule, and we don't always exercise good judgment. Forgive us. We are thankful for those citizens who offer their time in public service. We're especially thankful for firefighters, police officers, schoolteachers, and especially, most especially, for soldiers and military personnel. Be with all of them as they serve us, and be with this board as it deliberates tonight. Amen.
Do you want us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our county?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is strange, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the staff this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have two additions. The first would be item H, and this is a request for the awarding of a purchase contract for four new ambulances to Northwestern Emergency Vehicles for a total bid price of $319,928. And this is for our Specialty Services Division. The second item that I have is under closed session and a request for an attorney-client discussion under General Statute 143-31811A3.
Okay. Any adjustments from any member of the board this evening? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt this agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Griffith for adoption. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That moves us to presentation of special recognitions and awards, and I believe we have someone this evening, Mr. Smith, we wish to recognize.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Tracy Jackson, our deputy county manager, is going to make a presentation or introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have here with us tonight Mrs. Nancy Keith. Mrs. Keith is our new Cooperative Extension Director. She was hired April 1st. She is a native of Iredell County, and she brings 23 years of cooperative extension experience to us. She joined Cooperative Extension as an area specialized dairy agent in Yadkin County in 1989. She was named Yadkin County's Extension Director in 2007. In addition, she has served as interim Allegheny County Director since 2009. She holds a master's and bachelor's degree from NC State University. Her master's degree is in agriculture, and her bachelor's degree is in animal science. And at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mrs. Nancy Keith, so she can give you a few comments and just address the board.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, I would like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve Cooperative Extension here in Iredell County. I was born and raised on a dairy farm in northern Iredell County, feel that I do have the experience to lead Cooperative Extension. Though the shoes may be awful big to fill, I've worked quite a bit with Mr. Vaughn in the past, and those experiences and the leadership that he led me into have been very beneficial. Again, the opportunity to come back home after 23 years in Yadkin County is a goal that I have strived for, and it's always good to set goals, but then it's even better to achieve those goals. So, the leadership of Cooperative Extension in Iredell County is one of the greatest things that I think that I could ever achieve, and I look forward to serving you as the board. I look forward to mostly serving the citizens of Iredell County and the farmers, and it's good to get back to doing dairy work where my roots are. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Keith, I have, everyone that I've spoken with in the ag community thinks well of you. You have a good reputation.
Well, thank you very much.
I congratulate you on that, and I look forward to working with you and establishing a relationship where we can provide a service to you as far as, from the board's perspective, if there's any problems in the ag community that need our attention, if you'll bring them, we pledge our support and our cooperation to help you address those issues.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And likewise, if you hear any complaints or any concerns that we haven't gotten on top of, please let us know.
Well, thank you. Welcome.
Thanks.
We have an appointment before the board this evening, a presentation of a proclamation proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. It pleases everyone at this point. I'll read that proclamation. "A proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable asset, and whereas safe, stable nurturing homes and communities are needed to foster healthy growth and development for all children, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of communities, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, the knowledge of parenting and child development programs, and the concrete resources needed to cope with stress and to nurture their children, ensure that all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies are known to succeed when there are partnerships created by citizens, human services agencies, schools, faith communities, health care providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls upon citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. And that's signed by myself, Steve Johnson, attested to by our clerk, Ms. Jean Moore." Is there someone here this evening who would like to receive this?
Amy Isley.
Come up, Ms. Isley, and I'll present you this.
I'm presenting this to you on behalf of Iredell County Board of Commissioners, and we thank you for your power, sir, and for putting out the end of the year of our children and our children.
At this point, we'll call a meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to rezoning case 1203-1, a request from owner, applicant Pfeifer I. Johnson, limited partnership for the rezoning of 3.2 acres of a 40.4 acre tract from residential agricultural district to neighborhood business district. The location is 111 Rocky River Road in Mooresville, North Carolina. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The case you have before you tonight, I'd like to review a little, just overview information. Currently, as shown on this map, the zoning is rural agricultural, and it is a portion of a 40 acre tract outlined in blue in that kind of mustardy hatched area. That's the 3.2 acres that's under consideration, and as you can see, it's directly located on the corner of Rocky River Road and Shears Road. Also, across in the reddish hatched area, you can see that the town of Mooresville has significant areas of zoning in place already around this tract. This is our future land use plan. This request fits nicely into what is predicted to be a rural commercial node in that area. That's that oblong-looking feature in the middle of the map, and again, you can see that that fits very nicely into the rural commercial projected future land use for the area. On the aerial view, and if I can get the laser, what you can see here is the adjoining properties. This is actually the Food Lion Shopping Center and Gas Station that's been developed under the city of Mooresville, and also across the road, there's a machine shop. So you can see that there has been some commercial development in other corners and in and around this property. This is a view of the building facing, and you can see that it's a metal shell-type building, and there's also an attached barn with this structure. Both structures are proposed to be treated by this rezoning request. There used to be a grading business that was located in this building up until June 2011, so this property has been used since the '70s as a commercial use. This is adjoining property, a single-family residential. Across the road, there's the Food Lion and Gas Station development that was developed under the town of Mooresville. This is that machine shop that I referred to earlier, and again, another view looking at adjoining residential property. Again, this property had been used since the 1970s as a grading business. The property owners approached us, they would like to open an auto repair business, and the first thing that concerned us is that outside storage of junk or wrecked vehicles is not allowed in a neighborhood business zoning district, but the property owners don't want that as well. So they intend not to store any type of junked or wrecked vehicles on this property. However, this is not a conditional zoning request, it is a general use request, so other uses would be allowed should they want to change use. Also in this, the town of Mooresville has designated this area in their future land use plan as neighborhood center, which is similar to our neighborhood rural commercial business designation. So again, this fits quite well should this property at some point be brought forth into the town of Mooresville. So again, the property is in close proximity to other areas that are already zoned, commercial or designated as rural commercial in our 2030 Horizon Plan. The use is permitted in the neighborhood business district, fit into that rural commercial Business has been located on the property since 1970. Other businesses, as I shared, are already in place around this, and the town of Mooresville, they preferred that a commercial, or excuse me, conditional district zoning be placed on this property. However, given the restrictions that we have of no outside storage, I feel like we're achieving the town of Mooresville's goals as well at trying to achieve some kind of consistency in the develop, development along this corridor, excuse me. So I'll pause at this point if you have any questions of me.
Mr. Roskowski, is that the Food Lion across the street, is that served by utilities from the town of Mooresville or there on Sectic, you know?
Actually, I'd have to, Rebecca, do you, they're on, they're on Town Services.
Right. Any other questions of Mr. Roskowski? Hearing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to address this issue? Feel free to come forward and speak your mind. Okay. We declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion or discussion. Mr. Chairman, a move for approval. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to administrative matters, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, memo number three, our first presentation, is from David Kielson with NCDOT, and this is an update on the Statesville Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
Yes, I'm with the NCDOT Transportation Planning Branch, and I'd like to give you a brief update on the comprehensive transportation plan for the Statesville area, which is underway. And as you're probably aware, the CTP is a joint effort between the city, the county, the Lake Norman Rural Planning Organization, and NCDOT. And RPO staff is also here tonight, should you have any comments or questions. At this point in the study, we've completed the data collection, building a computer model of the transportation network, and analyzing the deficiencies. And we're now in the midst of analyzing alternative solutions to those deficiencies and drafting some recommended improvements. So let me, I think you have in your agenda packs these maps, and these maps actually are intended to convey a lot of information in one place. They do take a little bit of getting used to, though, as far as the information that's on them, so I'll try to explain briefly some of the things you see here. First of all, the color coding. Blue, of course, is the freeways, I-77 and I-40. The red are boulevards, essentially divided, not necessarily currently divided, but potentially recommended to be divided. Not necessarily a very wide median, it could be a narrow one, but some sort of a divided road. And the black or gray lines are what we call thoroughfares. Those are just your sort of standard undivided road, either two lanes, or in some cases, three or four lanes. The other thing to explain here, besides the color, is the style of the line. The solid lines, if you look, say, in the southwest quadrant, you see US 70, and that's a solid black line, meaning that that's an existing highway, and at least at this point in the process, we're not recommending any improvements there. If you look at Old Mountain Road, you'll see that is a red and black line alternating. That means an existing road, but we're recommending improvements to it, in this case, becoming a boulevard. And if you look, say, in the southeast quadrant, you'll see some dashed lines, and those represent recommended roads, roads which are not currently there, but which are being recommended. So as you see, there are improvements recommended for I-77, for I-40, Garner Bagnall Boulevard, Old Mountain Road, and quite a number of other ones. And we're looking for feedback, not only tonight, but throughout the process as we move forward. So if you have any comments at any point, please contact either myself or Bjorn Hansen with the RPO, and I think somewhere in your agenda packet, there was our phone numbers and email contact information. But if I, if I can answer any questions at this point, I'll be happy to do so.
I did have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are y'all recommending that we put a median on Davie Avenue? That's a, those houses are pretty close to the street, and it's too many.
Let's see, now, actually, if you look there, essentially, that has been identified as a deficiency. It's actually pretty close to capacity currently, and the specific recommendations are still under review, and concerns such as that one are obviously things that need to be taken into account. So ways that we address capacity deficiencies are sometimes widening, adding lanes, in other cases, improving a parallel route may be an option. We've had, well, not exactly there, but fairly close to there, we've started some discussions about potential for a one-way pair, with Sullivan being the northbound, but there are obviously some, you know, possible complications with that. So these are the types of things that we're currently exploring.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Kielson, there, as I drive around sometime, there's a number of places in Statesville where you could alleviate traffic congestion rather inexpensively. There's a number of places around town if you just had a right-hand turn lane.
Mm-hmm.
And if I had a, I've suggested, actually, I brought it up a couple times, the DOT responded and put a turn lane in, but they make them too darn short. You get two cars in it, and nobody else can get over there. So I know cost factor comes into consideration, but right-hand turn lanes go a long way, but you need to make them a little longer than for two or three cars, because you're not accomplishing a whole lot.
Okay. Yeah, in the CTP, we tend to focus primarily on the more large-scale improvements as opposed to, say, intersection improvements, but any specific areas where you have concerns, you know, we can certainly look at what might be recommended there, and if it does turn out to be more of an intersection improvement, we can pass that on to the parts of DOT that are more involved with those aspects. So any particular areas, whether they're intersections or whole stretches of road that are a concern, we'd very much like to hear that kind of feedback.
Okay. I'll compile my list, and I see Ms. Sherri Asher from the City of Statesville, we're glad to have you here this evening. I'll compile a list and get it to her, but there's a number of places I just ride around. One of them is, is at the bottom of the ramp where you, where the frontage road starts up toward 40 there at 21. If you just had a right-hand turn lane that would support a few cars when you come down to make that right-hand turn, so they go ahead and clear that intersection, that, I know, several times during the busy parts of the day, if folks could make that right-hand turn and get on out of the way, you'd do, go a long way toward alleviating some of that congestion at that intersection.
Right.
From the old sagebrush, you're talking.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, any other questions or comments? I take it there's no, no action required this evening, Mr. Kielson, you just?
No, this is just an informational presentation, and we will be coming back when we have recommendations which are more nearly final, to present them before going to a public comment period and a public hearing, and then ultimately asking for adoption. So that's, that's to come still.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your work.
The next item we have is a request for approval of a memorandum of understanding between the county and NC Deaner, and this is concerning our erosion and sedimentation control program.
Thank you. When Iredell County took over the erosion control function from the state of North Carolina several years ago, it was done by simple resolution, agreeing to the state of North Carolina that we will enforce the Semmentation Control, or Semmentation Pollution Control Act of 1973. I believe as more and more jurisdictions take over this program, the state is realizing that they need some kind of agreement in place just to assure them that certain activities are occurring in the jurisdictions. This is just an agreement between, again, Iredell County and the state of North Carolina that assures them that we are enforcing that, that state act of 1973, and also places into effect some reporting and inspection requirements of our jurisdiction. But I'm very pleased and happy to report that we're meeting or exceeding everything they are requiring of us. So in essence, this is what we see as an agreement that has no fiscal impact on us, it does not require us to be doing more than we're already doing, and I don't see that this is leading up to any other things that will come our way in accordance with this type of program. So I'll pause to take any, any questions you may have, but we do recommend that you consider adopting this agreement.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Roskowski?
If the plans were to change from the state of North Carolina, would we be required to sign a new commitment, or would the, the new plans that the state brings in, if they bring in any, would they fall under this agreement?
I would assume that we would, if there are any changes to the state statutes, this agreement refers to those state statutes, so without looking at it in detail, I'd have to say that this agreement would just parallel whatever changes may come into effect through
If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding from Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you.
Memo number five is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 42 to recognize $83,000 in seized funds and to appropriate the training.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Mr. Smith, first of all, I want to apologize, some of this is, we did ask to move $83,000 from our seized funds to our training. However, $69,000 of this money is going to be appropriated to, for startup money to start our own law enforcement training academy, and we're going to utilize Ebenezer School to do this. This will help us train our own officers, get more intense training, so when they do come out of school, they won't have to go through no FTO program, and they'll be ready to go on the road. We're also going to use our own in-house instructors to do this, and the remaining part of this money will be put into our, our training budget. But I did want to clarify that, and I apologize, I didn't, when this was sent over, I didn't, I wanted to make sure that you folks understood that.
Any question, Mr. Dadd? Mr. Dadd, one question I have, of the $83,000, you say $69,000 is one-time purchase for equipment, and the remainder would actually be the cost associated with operation of the program?
No, sir, the $69,000 will be for the, this is the first part that we have to do for the state of North Carolina to get accredited to, to start the school, and you have to have the equipment in place before they'll sign off on it. The other part is to put in for our, for our training budget to get us through the rest of the year.
Okay. So here it is, April, we got April, May, and June, so we're looking at $14,000 is going to finish you to the end of June for this, is that what you're counting?
With what we have in there, yes, sir.
On an annualized basis, we're looking at around $56,000?
Yes, sir. Under that, I don't have those figures in front of me, but that's close, yes, sir.
Is this something ongoing in the future, this $56,000? Is this, is this something you'd be willing to continue to fund out of your seized drug money, or would this go to the baseline operation?
We'll, we'll continue to try to fund this, and it's, and that figure is going to be relative pretty high versus what I think it's going to end up costing. Until we get in it, I can't really give it. Until we get in it, I can't really give a, an exact figure what it's going to continue, you know, for the up cost of that.
My concern going forward is the cost of running the sheriff's department's going to go up because you'll probably burn as much fuel as any department in the county. And I don't want to get in a situation where we're increasing the baseline operational part of the budget that we do actually have control over. Because it's going to rise regardless of our best efforts. So I'm just asking for a commitment that in, in the coming budget year, that this fifty-six thousand on an annualized basis doesn't wind up in a budget in the out years that we're going to have to, we're going to have to cover.
Yeah, I understand.
We're, we're just having to be real careful right now about maintaining baseline operational costs as much as possible.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. Okay.
I have some question for we take over.
Yes, sir.
Um, are you getting hit on propane as bad as yard of gasoline since we converted some of those cars?
Hmm, no, our propane cost is still maintained, still staying pretty low.
Good.
We're still paying the same thing that we were when we initially started. So we're doing pretty well with that.
All right.
I have a question. Is there the potential that this training academy could be utilized by other counties?
Yes.
Or just?
That's, that's.
We could charge for services?
Uh, that's something we'll have to look into. The, of course, the students that would come will still be responsible for their books and so forth. The county won't be purchasing them, they'll be purchasing them on theirself. But as far as from another county coming into Sin City, because we're going to also try to run a detention school there as well. And so, you know, we'll have to see what we can, you know, with those figures. And I've not got that.
Okay, any other questions? Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Forty-two, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion from Vice Chairman Norman for approval of Budget Amendment Number Forty-two. Would you accept a friendly amendment to that motion?
Sure.
That with the understanding this will be funded out of seized drug funds? And if that needs to change, then a request will come back to this board for additional appropriation?
Sure.
Okay. So the motion is to, from Vice Chairman Norman to approve Budget Amendment Forty-two with the amendment that it would be, the understanding it'd be funded in the forthcoming years out of seized drug money unless action taken by this board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Memo number six is a request from the Fire Marshal's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number Forty-three for the appropriation of sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars to the Harmony Fire, Volunteer Fire Department.
This budget amendment is for the Harmony Fire Department to be able to equip a ladder truck of which they purchased. Frank Phillips is with the Fire Tax Board and Fire Chief Trent Cranfield is here. If you have any questions about this appropriation.
Okay. Any questions of these gentlemen?
This money comes out of the fire tax that's assigned to this area, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Comes out of the fire tax money that's collected.
And we have funds available.
And they've got a truck look like a brand-new one up there. What year is it, Trent?
It is a ninety-eight model.
Ninety-eight model. You can't tell it from one that's just one year old.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I'd like to address one issue while I have you gentlemen here. President, the county manager's going to report on this under his comment. I guess you folks have heard of, I believe, Mr. Trump is going to close on his purchase of the point on Thursday, it looks like. My concern, and I think the concern of many folks that, that I've talked to about this is, is that if Mr. Trump goes through with his purchase and he makes the improvements, improvements that he intends to make at the point, it's inevitable at some point he's going to have to ask to be annexed by the town of Mooresville in order to secure utilities. My concern is that's going to adversely affect the tax base that's supplied to the county for the countywide fire service. Now, what's happened in the past, it's my understanding that, that when there's a disagreement between municipalities and counties over who's responsible for that debt, municipalities have maintained that the amount of debt that they are responsible for is the percentage of the debt as related to the countywide fire district. Counties have maintained that the debt they're responsible for is the percentage of the debt related to that specific fire service district. In every case that I'm aware of, the municipalities have prevailed and the counties have lost. So if we're not careful, we could wind up with a situation where Mooresville will annex a whole lot of tax base out there. An overwhelming majority of that debt will still be the countywide fire district's responsibility to service. So I just want to make you gentlemen aware of that. And, and I think that this board going forward should be very careful about any significant increase in indebtedness till we find out what, what the consequences are going to be of Mr. Trump's purchase. And I don't, I don't consider myself a difficult person, but I'm, if it has the potential to impact it as severely as it does, I'm, I'm going to be a hard sell on incurring any more debt for a while. I just want to, just trying to be fair and upfront with you and make you aware of that. Okay, are there any further questions, these gentlemen? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval for the memo number six.
Motion for approval for memo number six comes from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion on his motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson also has the next item as well.
Okay, the next item that we're requesting is the adoption of the two thousand twelve International Fire Code with North Carolina amendments. A new code comes out about every three years. And there are differences in the code. And this has to be adopted before it can actually really be enforced. There's no cost to it. It's just it has to be approved by the commissioners to be able to, for us to enforce this code.
Okay. All right, any questions of Mr. Thompson?
If I could just get some clarification, maybe Mr. Smith could clarify. The section that's included on the memo about the church stove and their fan, could you clarify what that change means to a church?
I probably should refer to Mr. Thompson on that.
Okay.
I just don't understand the wording on this particular.
Okay, usually, what, what they have done is they have changed the, the requirements for inspections of hoods and things like that. For example, a church very seldom uses theirs. So they may, if they don't use them as much, they would only be required to be inspected once a year. Whereas if you have something like a, a pizza restaurant that uses wood, that may go every three months. So they have clarified the difference in the use of the equipment versus the, you know, and we verify, you know, if a church uses it once, you know, every three months, the hood's not going to get as dirty as it does if you use it every day.
Thank you.
Okay. This is actually better for a church, is what you're saying?
Yeah. That's just one of the changes we're doing.
Any other questions? All right, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from, Mr. Griffith?
The adoption of the two thousand twelve International Fire Code.
Okay. Motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Memo number eight is a request from the Mooresville Graded School District for approval to apply for lottery funds totaling four thou, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Last year and this year, we've had to actually budget some lottery proceeds for Mooresville graded schools to help support the debt that was issued by the county in prior years. This year, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine seventy-four was included in the fiscal year twelve budget. And the Mooresville School Board has approved the application. And I would request the board to approve it so we can submit it and draw down our money.
Okay. All right, any questions of Ms. Blumenthal?
So this means they will be getting the money then, is that right?
Yes, sir. The money's already available. There's a little over nine hundred thousand available currently.
How much?
A little over nine hundred thousand. I think it's nine, nine forty-eight.
So they're not getting none of my mega-million money from last week then, huh?
No, sir.
That comes later.
This is already on deposit in the county's name at the State Treasurer's Office.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion from Vice Chairman Norman for approval. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is a request for approval of the March ninth and tenth, two thousand twelve winter planning session minutes and the regular meeting minutes from March twentieth.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections of these minutes? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item we have is the addition, the addition to the agenda, and this was item H. And this is a request for the awarding of a purchase contract for four new ambulances that are associated with our specialty services EMS program.
Good evening. We went out to bid for the Sprinter ambulance about, Sprinter ambulance was about a month ago. It was formally bid, it was formally advertised. Bids were opened, read aloud at a public meeting. Low bid for that project was Northwestern Emergency Vehicles with a bid of three hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Our recommendation and request is for award of a purchase contract to procure the four Sprinter ambulances from Northwestern Emergency Vehicles.
Mr. Lael, did we have a specific amount budget for this?
Yes, sir. There were three hundred and forty thousand, yes, three hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted in the specialty program for this.
Okay. Any other questions?
This is just for the bodies? We've already got the chassis or?
Yeah, I think this is just Sprinter ambulances and they're up fit for the equipment already is my understanding.
Correct. This is a complete unit for a Sprinter. It's actually different from the type of ambulance we are reboxing or remounting the old boxes on. This is a complete Sprinter-type ambulance.
Does it have the lights and all on it? I mean, what else are we going to have to add when we get them?
I think the only thing that has to be added after the fact is going to be the radios and possibly computers. But the lights, all emergency services equipment is on the vehicle.
That Northwestern one we're getting from, is that the one up in Sparta? Is that the?
Uh, yes, Northwestern.
Okay. Uh, the bids were close. It's very close.
Extremely close, yes, sir.
Hmm, that's good.
Okay, any other questions? Floor's open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, move for approval. We have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell for approval. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have an announcement of the Troutman Board of Adjustment for their ETJ area. There's one announcement of a vacancy. I see no appointments to boards and commissions on our agenda unless you have something on our reminder list. Hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. No unfinished business, public comment period, that's usually the second meeting. Mr. Messick, is anyone signed up to speak? Okay. Thank you, sir. Any new business? County managers report.
As Chairman Johnson mentioned earlier, I went down to the point yesterday and met with Eric Trump, who is Donald Trump's son. And it was at his invitation, Mr. Johnson couldn't make it, so I went down there instead. And we talked a good bit about their project and what they're looking to do. And it sounds real promising for the South End. Looks like they're going to invest a good bit of money. But as we, as Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, there is the issue about the fire tax and, Lake Norman Fire and annexation. Mr. Trump was not really in a position to commit to anything while we were, we're talking about it. But we did talk about it pretty much in depth. And he did assure me that, you know, they're not looking to do anything to, to harm the county or to really cause any real issues when it comes to this. And my impression going away from it was they'd be very much willing to sit down and talk with us as we go forward with this. So very much, you know, willing to talk about it. Didn't seem like there was real issues as we were talking about it yesterday. So just kind of wanted to give you an update on that because it is a pretty substantial amount of property and investment.
Okay. Anything? Okay. At this point, I'll offer a motion. We go into closed session for economic development under General Statute forty, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A four, and attorney-client privilege under General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have, as a result of the closed session, we have one brief matter to attend to. Mr. Robertson, I believe you have a motion to...
Chairman, I make the motion to modify the economic development incentive agreement for the Carolina Beer and Beverage Company, first approved on June 3, 2008. This will be the third amendment that will reduce the required investment amount from $9,524,000 to $9,495,000, and the incentive will be reduced to $169,011 over a five-year period contingent upon the amendment to the agreement being executed within 180 days.
Okay. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this point, I'll offer a motion that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.